Okay. Good evening. I call the Pleasant Valley Planning Board meeting to order. Could everyone turn on their microphones so that you're ready to speak? Okay. So... Are we too close to us? I don't think my teeth matter. Just a little feedback. All right. So our first thing tonight on the agenda is the Sunrun Installation Service Ground Solar 48 Friar Package line. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Will you step to the podium, please state your name?
Good evening. My name is Patricia. I am from Sunrun. I'm from the inspections department. I'm here to present the project for you guys. We're going to be installing a 1.2 kilowatt system, 48 panel, sorry, 28 panels and it's going to be a ground mount.
Did you say 28 or 48?
28, I'm sorry. I had initially said 28. I misquoted, I misread it. It's 28.
28.
Yeah.
Thank you. Do you want, is there anything you'd like to...
That's it. I'm just here to see if you guys approve it or not.
Okay.
I'm from the inspections department, not from permitting. So I'm put back into it.
All right. So questions? Anybody, Greg or Jim, do you want to... Comments?
Provide a comment. Do you want me to read through some of those?
Oh yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
So the, and I got to look at the application. I had on...
You need your room.
And looking through the update, I had on my comment letter 29 ground and I'm a solar panel. So I thought I saw somewhere where it said 29. I do see where it says 28 here on the plan, so I thought that was what I was thinking. Okay. The, I went out to the site and just took a quick look. The property to the, to the west or to the northwest is lower in elevation than the property that the panel is sitting on. And it appears that they have a pretty decent line of established trees between the two properties. So I don't know to what extent screening would be required, but it is required with the code that that be considered for screening of the panels from the adjacent properties. It is very visible from the road, so the planning board may just wish to have the screening between the road and the panels. There, anyways, there's no, it's a clear sight from the road to that portion of the yard. So I think the planning board may want to consider screening and looking and getting input from the neighbor to make sure it is accurate and it's established well and screened from the neighbor. And then the, where it shows on the plan is a septic pipe. It was unclear to me as to whether or not the leach field is in between that pipe and the road or if it's between that pipe and the actual property because we wouldn't want the solar panels to set on the leach. I looked on the file map and the file map showed the leach field in that general area, but I did not, they should be able to have hit the grid from, I don't know, they don't call me Agent Subdivision. They may have the grid in the county, where the septic system is located.
Okay.
County Health Department. But we, it would just, I think it's important that we all see the panels on top of them.
A thousand percent.
The septic system. I couldn't see a specific measure, mercurial location in the, on the plan. The height of the panels, the height is limited to 12 feet. And I didn't see this, I mean, there were dimensions there, but I could not find dimensions from ground to the top.
Okay.
Some of the other comments are just simply, some of the requirements check have application to central Hudson for, for lower insurance. Or that, I think that was really all I had in mind. Oh, just confirmation, there's aren't batteries proposed. There are no...
No batteries.
...indication of batteries, but I just wanted to add that.
Nope. Not, not a, not a battery project.
Because I think the fire department had that comment as well.
Yes, the fire department's major comment though was about shut off valves.
Okay.
You know, being, being marked as well as having shut off.
Shut off valves inside.
Yes. What about stormwater runoff in regard to the panels? Is there, you know, a plan for that? And the screening from the road, I think we would definitely want to have some screening from the road.
So we have the screening, we have the shut, and you said something about runoff?
Yeah, stormwater runoff. We require some kind of plan for that. I don't think I have any other comments. Oh, and Greg, are warning signs needed on the panels that's electric, those kinds of types of signage?
That would be more building code and, and, than site plans, so I'm not specifically sure as to what electric code requirements would be for, because I'm sure like some of the comments the fire department had, the shut offs and things like that.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know if that's something the planning board typically gets involved with, but that would be a code compliant issue with, with fire disconexions.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or other comments? Jim, did you have anything for them?
No, I do not.
My question is, have you spoken to the neighbors and are they in favor? Have they submitted letters?
I'm not aware, I'm not aware if they have spoken to the neighbors or not. I can say that I can bring that back to them, bring that back to the sales rep and the customer and present that to them and see if that's an issue, but we haven't gotten any pushback as far as I'm aware.
We can require a public hearing.
Okay.
What would the board like to do? Should we see if, should we do a public hearing? Or, you think so? Or should we see if they can collect letters where the neighbors say they don't, they don't mind having these panels that you can see from the road or, I mean, what do you think? How should we go with this?
In the past, we've collected letters. In the past, we've collected letters.
Okay.
As long as they're from all the adjacent neighbors and anyone else who might have sightline. So, and in that case, the board before had agreed to waive a public hearing. The other choice you have is just to circulate for a public hearing, hold the public hearing.
I mean, I'm all for, I'm all for the letters or for a shot. Like we've done that in other EHAs before, like let them know. So yeah, we can, we can do that. We can send out letters to let them know that we're doing this. Is there like a response that we're supposed to get from them? Like letting us know that like yes, we're okay with it or should we do door knocking?
Yes. It's, everyone should, who's adjacent or has a sightline, should submit a letter saying that they are, they do not object.
Within a certain timeframe.
Right.
Right. Well, obviously we can't...
If, because if we don't, if we can't vote on it.
Right. About that. What do you guys think? Public hearing or like letter?
Yeah, I'm starting to think maybe a public hearing would be easier.
Letters.
Letters, letters.
Yeah.
Letters. Okay. So that, we'll go with that.
Okay.
So, any...
The only thing I, the comment I have is that with this, we have required screening both from the road and from any neighbors and you don't show the adjacent neighbors very clearly. I mean, it's sort of indicated in a vicinity map, but it's hard to see. So if you could submit with your screening plans, the sightline from the neighbors that do have a visual and how, the screening and what we've done in the past is this goes on your approved site plan. The homeowner should be aware of it. It becomes a part of the approved site plan so that the screening is required to be maintained. And, and that's sort of up to you to take a look at it. Is it seen from the road? Does it need screening from the road?
Okay.
Does it need screening from a neighbor?
Okay.
And then that should be part of the submitted plan.
The items for submission need to be in in two days. Is that right, Courtney? It says on our...
Yeah.
That seems so soon.
I know.
How do they get it? She can't possibly get the letters. I was going to say, we could put them on the agenda for the September 11th meeting, but I don't know how you could possibly get all your letters in in the next couple of days.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know if I can do that in two days.
Okay, why don't we, why don't we do this? You, you collect your letters.
Okay.
And as soon as you, you know, get in, Courtney can let me know and we'll see the timing. So it might have to unfortunately wait to the October meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But we will do our best to get you back on our docket because once you're in process, we like to keep you moving. So we'll, we'll work with you on that. Thank you. All right. I guess that's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Take care. Okay. So number two is... The Michael Schroeder ZBA referral, 92 weeks down the road, referral to the ZBA for an interpretation. The applicant is appealing a determination made that the property was converted from a single family residence to a two family. I'm going to make a motion that the zoning board of appeals use their best judgment on this project, recognizing that if their determination is that a two family home is allowable, then it will come back to the planning board for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any, any comments or discussion? All in favor?
I agree.
Thank you. That passes. Okay.
I just have a, I just had a little question on it. Do you know how many bedrooms that they're planning on?
Moving forward, I do not, but I know it was a two bedroom home.
No, I understand.
Originally, yeah.
Okay.
The May minutes. Has everyone had a chance to look at the May minutes? We can take a few minutes and look over the May and June minutes. Let's deal with the May minutes first. I make a motion to accept the May minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Priya. Any discussion, additions or deletions to the minute? All in favor?
Aye.
The June minutes. I make a motion to accept the June minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second Priya. Any discussion, additions or deletions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a second?
Norm. All in favor?
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much for tonight.